Good afternoon. The time is 1:32 PM. The date is Thursday, May 1st, 2025. It's another beautiful day here in paradise and I'm pleased to call to order the regularly scheduled May meeting of 2025 for the West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. I'll ask our secretary first to please call the roll.
Emily and Savage.
Present.
Dana Picotte.
Present.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Sherri Hack. Let the record reflect that Jonathan Burgess and Alfred Fields are not present.
Okay. With that, we do have four members present here at the moment, so we do have a quorum. I'll now ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The first item of business is consideration of the minutes from our last meeting. They were all distributed in the board packet before the meeting, so hopefully everyone has had a chance to review them. I'll first entertain if there are any additions, corrections, modifications to the minutes, and if not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second? Okay. That's a motion by Board Member Picotte and second by Board Member Savage. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. The minutes are approved. The next item of business is a report from our Planning Division staff. I'll ask Ms. Jones Van to please come up to the podium.
Chair Angela Van Plannen is on and administrative. Only, um, only common staff has is planning ZBA case number, um, 3446 and 3, I'm just getting wrong, 2, 3445, 3450 and 3451. Those two cases are identical and as Louise comes up, it's going to do the same presentation, one presentation for both cases. So I asked when it comes up, could you read both of those into the record at the same time?
Perfect. Will do. Thank you. Okay. That moves us to, excuse me, comments from the chair. The first comment I want to make is I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the city's former planning director, Rick Green. Rick served the city for 28 years and he was always here in attendance at our ZBA meetings. His expertise and experience was extremely valuable to this board. He stepped in and on occasions when that expertise was needed and he helped provide us with a lot of guidance and I know that his presence here is going to be missed. He resigned from the city between last meeting and this meeting, so we don't have a chance to tell him thank you and recognize him in person, but I didn't want to let the time go by without just us sitting here and recognizing him. So a sincere thank you to Rick for all that he did for this board and for the city. The next item that I just want to cover was just to go over the procedures for today's hearing, so I'll walk through them so that everyone in the audience is familiar with how we conduct the hearing today. Matters before the ZBA are quasi judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicant will make a presentation to answer any questions from the board. The applicant will then be followed by city staff, who will then provide a presentation and recommendation to the board, and then answer any questions. Members of the public will then be given the opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance at today's meeting, such as emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. Then the applicant will have a chance for rebuttal. The floor will be closed. The board will go into executive session for discussion, motion, and then a vote. And as a reminder, four affirmative votes are required for approval. Currently on the dais today, we have four members present, so that means that any items would require unanimous vote in order to be approved. So with that, we'll go on to ex parte communication and I'll start off with my, on my left, with Member Savage.
As to matter of 3450 and 3451, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received any written communications. I have not conducted investigation and I have not made a site visit and I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Board Member Picotte.
As to matter case number 3446, I have not had ex parte communications. I have received written communications. There was a text message just asking about the application process to which I directed them to the website and Angela. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. That being said, I am familiar with the development company because they have come in front of another board, an HOA board, so I'm just disclosing that, but there is no professional or personal relationship there. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. As far as case number 3450 and 3451, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit and I have not received expert opinions and I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And Board Member Hack, who, and just as a reminder, you will be a full voting member today, since we have four people up here.
Okay. As to case numbers 3446, 3450, 3451, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And for myself, as to case number 3446, 3450 and 3451, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. So with that, we'll move into the public hearing and we'll start off with the swearing in of speakers. All those who are present today who wish to speak on any of the three cases on our agenda today, please rise and be sworn in by our board secretary.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on now to the first case, which is zoning Board of Appeals, case number 3446. I'll ask our board secretary to please read that one into the record.
A request by Casey Clemens of Samfish Development on behalf of 1510 South Olive Development LLC for a variance from section 94-309G6C, maximum townhouse height in section 94-306A, height exemptions of the city's zoning and land development regulations to allow the construction of two townhouse units. The subject property consisting of approximately 0.22 acres is located at 1510 South Olive Avenue within Commission District Number 5, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. I'll now ask the applicant to please come forward and make a presentation.
Good afternoon. My name is Alejandro Barrero. I'm the architect, principal of Barrero Architecture, representing the project of 1510 South Olive. Let me load the presentation here. Okay. The project that we're looking at, here you see an aerial photograph. The lot is located at 1510 South Olive Avenue, which is, and is currently vacant. The proposed use of the lot is to subdivide the lot into two simple parcels for townhomes use. Currently, the property is zoned MF32, which allows multifamily residential and townhomes. The building includes, what we're proposing that I'll show you in a minute, includes the two units. They're kind of distinct in nature. One has a flat roof, the other one has a pitch roof. Currently, under MF32, you can go up to 40 feet, like I said, for a multifamily use. If you select to go with the townhomes, the maximum height is 35 feet. So what we are requesting is variances on the building height that would be consistent with the underlying zoning, which allows you to go to 40 feet. We're not going to go quite to 40 feet, so there's two variances, one for the maximum townhouse height, which, as I said, is currently a maximum of 35. We're requesting for the flat roof portion to go to 37 foot nine and a quarter and for the gable roof portion to go to 38 foot one and a quarter. So it's about between 2 foot 9 and 3 feet of height difference from what's permitted for townhomes. And then the second variance has to do with the height exemptions, which is for like the parapets and decorative features, gables and so on, where you can go up currently under to 38 and a half foot and we're requesting additional height to go to 44, which is the max. The reason is, you know, that would be consistent if you go to 40, the underlying district allows you to go to 40 plus 10% for these features. That's where you get to 44, so that's what we are requesting at the moment. So let me show you, this is what the lot looks like currently, so it is the portion to the right of this photo. So it's unique in that it's surrounded by, to the south, it's got the Viking Arms condo building. It's four stories. To the east, it's got the tall Leclerc condominium, which is 25 stories in height. And then to the north, you have the one-story commercial architect's office building for Smith &amp; Moore. So it's got a kind of an eclectic neighboring properties. Our project would be abutting on the, on the south side, mostly, as you saw in the aerial photograph, is abutting the pool of the Viking Arms. These are some other images showing that it's kind of, kind of a variety of heights. It's already surrounded by taller buildings on the south and on the east. Want to show you a little bit of what the project is about, so this is a site plan showing both, both units. So even though we are requesting to go higher, we're now requesting to go high all the way across. We've designed the project to create some separation between the adjacent properties, particularly on the north and south, which would be the ones that might be more affected by the height. On the, like I said, on the east, you got that tall building. So the, as you'll see in the next slide, this is an elevation, so these two units will look distinct. The red lines that you see in the image, the lower one would be the currently allowed maximum height and the blue line, the two blue lines would be the maximum height for, if you were to, that is permitted as a multifamily structure. This is like a preliminary rendering of what the project will look like. As you can see, even though we're requesting additional height, the building is not like just an extruded box. To that height is just certain areas exceed that height, but we're, we're kind of managing the architecture to create some separation and some, kind of like a stepping profile from, from the sides towards the center of the structure. There's some other images showing that. So the, just going a little bit through the standards and our justification is some of the special conditions and circumstances that exist in the site is that although the parcel is really small, so even though it's zoned for multifamily, we studied it and it's, it makes it very difficult to develop as a multifamily building where you would have to have structure parking, ramps. It's just a parcel, doesn't lend itself to do something like that. It's just, it's non-functional. So that's why we decided to go with a, in part, with a townhouse product, which is more viable and so even though the proposed structure is in, is zoned MF32, the, we feel that if we, if we request to go to a higher building height, because of the surrounding properties, I don't think it would be in detriment to any of the neighbors. Yeah. So there's, again, some of the, like a 360 video there. Like I said, the special conditions and circumstances necessitating the variance is the nature of the project, the fact that it's too small to create a multi-story building, the fact that we have kind of a unique condition. There's no, really no other property on that zoning designation that has kind of the different heights of the neighbors that we encounter on ours, so we feel that the project is not really impact, has no negative impact towards its context. This is kind of a little bit more, I'm just going through some of what you saw already in your report. One of the questions was if the interpretation of the provisions would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the zoning district. And like I said, 40-foot building height is allowed within the MF32, so other properties within the same district already enjoy this. We're not asking to go above what it's already allowed in the underlying district. It's just that the townhomes have kind of a different standard, which is 35. But we feel that by, by the way we have designed the property, with the difference in heights, I think that mitigates the fact that we're exceeding the building height allowed for, for townhomes. And, you know, I think we, this is important to us also, to get those additional feet in height to make the project viable, to make sure that we have the appropriate space to run utilities, to create ceiling spaces that are according to what this project is about and to make sure that the infrastructure that supports it is viable. And this is in harmony with, for the intents and purposes of the regulations. I think we're not going outside of what's already allowed in the code, so I think that those are the main items that I just wanted to review with you today and let me know if you have any questions or you want to go back to see any of the images.
Okay. Thank you. I'll start with Board Member Picotte, with any questions of the applicant.
Uh, yeah. I do notice that there is a tree, I think it might be like some sort of oak tree. Are you planning on preserving that as well?
Yes. The current plans show that, for that tree to be preserved.
Okay. And you did mention doing some sort of green space to the budding properties to kind of create a buffer zone as well?
Right. The building, if you, if we go back to the site plan for a little bit, I mean, as you can see here on the, on the rendering, we're locating the pools on the sides, so the building's stepping back and it's got, goes from one story to three stories and those, all the perimeter will be landscaped. Also, we're providing, as you can see here, the, along Olive, we're going to be providing adequate landscaping to buffer the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Board Member Hack, any questions to the applicant?
No questions.
Okay. Board Member Savage?
Yes. So it appears that the lot has previously been used as parking, if I wasn't mistaken from that picture?
Currently, I mean, it's, it's a vacant lot that some, it's, it's not formally used as parking. Some cars happen to park there.
Okay. And?
But it's, it's never, it's not formally a parking lot.
And it's just two townhouses that are being?
Just two, yes.
Okay. And then I thought on the last slide, you had mentioned something about like electrical variance, or was I mistaken on the last slide? But I didn't see that in the?
No, no, there is no variance. No, I was just saying that one of the reasons why we need the additional height is to make sure that the, we can, we can design the house, the interiors of the house adequately to, to allow for all the interior utilities to function well.
Okay. So it's, yeah, because as I see it, it's just the height, it's not?
It's just the height, yes. Just the height.
Okay. I understand. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any questions to the applicant. I think I may have one or two for staff after their presentation, but that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. I will now move on to the staff presentation.
Good afternoon for the record. Eric Schneider, Principal Planner. So I will pull up my presentation, which is not as snazzy because I don't have 3D renderings in it. And I'm not going to go over the items that were covered by the applicant, but I do want to point out a couple things. Once again, here's the site. This is just kind of, I know the slide that the applicant had was a little busy and that's the one in your report as well, so I just wanted to kind of reiterate. So this is the height that the, the front of the facade of the building that the applicant has provided. And so here is where the waiver would be, or the variance would be to grant to the 30, whatever feet it was. So the reason, and this, the applicant touched on this, the reason that this is important, that the condition that we put in there is that this waiver's really, the variance is really granted only for this particular project because as the applicant said, that they designed the project to step back in various architectural sides, and you can see a little more so on the side. If this was just a variance granted without this condition, then the applicant could redesign the building and fill in that box in red with building and the parapets and so forth. And you could imagine if you just extended that box all the way across, the impact it might have to, or it would have to the neighbors, the residential tower to the south, and as you go back and imagine the little drawing that the, as the 3D rendering, how that big box would fit differently on the site than what they've actually designed and how it would have a greater impact. There had been a question about landscaping. The tree is going to be preserved. It's on the plan, so you can see it, the existing tree on the left there. It will need to get trimmed up and prepped before they build the building. It's been let go a little bit so that it will be, you know, be viable over the long term and during construction. The green circle on the plan on the right is where that tree is and you can see its relationship to the front yard of the northern proposed townhouse. The landscape plan, you see all those circles on there, the bigger circles would be your trees and palms. There will be some palms along the south and north. They'll be meeting the landscape requirements in the front with both the tree that's existing and then another one you see in the lower left hand in front of that building. Along the backside, there are also going to be a combination of palms and green buttonwoods as well as hedges around the property. So they are, the 3D renderings that the applicant supplied were not exactly what they're having. They, they didn't put all the trees on there because then you wouldn't be able to see the building. What's important about leaving this tree here is also one of the reasons the staff felt that getting, having the extra height for the townhouses was not inappropriate because that existing tree will break up the, will be an existing breakup of the mass of the front of that building. There are also two, and you could, you saw in the applicant's presentation, there are two sable palms that are along Olive that will be relocated on that southwest corner of the site. So staff's recommend approval with the condition, that's in your staff report, that mentions the height variances shall only apply for a building constructed in accordance with the elevation shown in Exhibit A of the staff report. That exhibit will be carried over to the final order so that it is memorialized. But it does comply with all the variance standards. The applicant went through them. Staff's version of those are in your backup material. And we did get one additional letter of support from Mr. Jim Watson, who's in the Mango Promenade Historic District, which is the neighborhood that is west of, across the street of Olive, of South Olive. And he, I'd sent him the report and he gave this letter of support. I believe you might have that on your desk as well. Are there any questions of staff?
Thank you. I'll start off with Board Member Hack. Any questions of staff?
No.
Okay. Board Member Savage?
No questions.
Okay. Board Member Picotte?
No questions.
Okay. You answered one of my questions, which was just where this was in relation to the Mango Promenade Historic District. So it's outside?
Correct.
Historic District, but it butts it?
Yes. The Mango Promenade Historic District is, actually starts on the west side of Olive, right here. I'm not exactly sure off the top of my head if this is in it, but this is definitely the historic district over here. And this is a multifamily building. It's a two-story one, so, and you saw it in the applicant's presentation, so.
Okay. And then in the applicant's presentation, they made a comment that the MF32 zoning district does allow 40 feet in height, however, so, so depending on the use, 40 feet is allowed? It's just townhomes are restricted to 35?
Correct. So the MF32 zoning district has a base height of 40 feet and then it has setbacks that are based, that are granted, or that your, your flat setbacks on that, which would be 25 in the front, 15 on the sides and 15 feet on the rear. If you make a taller building than 40 feet, you start having to increase your setbacks to get height, which is, you don't see it, but this is if you follow any of our planned developments, that's typically what waivers are getting. That's what the Leclerc did. That's why it's a, you know, 23-story, 24-story building with, you know, 200 and some feet tall with 40-foot setbacks. It got setback waivers. Townhouses are allowed in all our multifamily districts with the same regulation, the townhouse regulations don't change. They're same in all districts, maximum height of 35 feet. However, the difference is that you can go to 10 feet with your front, excuse me, 20 feet for your front step back instead of 25 and only 10 on the sides and 10% of your lot depth, which gives you more area to build on the ground, but you don't get to go as high. The applicant has designed the building to meet those setbacks, but increase the height over what the townhouse, and that's what the variance is here for. Theoretically, could they have come in the other way around? Here's our height. We're asking for variances to the setbacks because we're going to be using the townhouse setbacks. But because they're building a townhouse project, the appropriate thing is to have them follow the townhouse regulations and then ask for the variance. You know, typically, coming in and asking, had they come in for a 50-foot height on those townhouses, we probably, we would have looked at it differently. But as the applicant pointed out, they are under the 40 feet and they don't even, they don't trigger that 40 feet with their, their variance for the roof and the 44 feet, which they could go because the height exception is 10% over what the district requires, allows. So because townhouses are 35 feet, 38 and a half would be how high you can go with your height exception for your mechanical, parapets, et cetera. They were taking, looking at that from the, what they were showing in there, they did not exceed what the normal MF32 40-foot height would allow of 44 feet. So they stayed under that, or in both cases, they stayed under what they could do as a regular multifamily 32 if they weren't doing townhouses. And that's what they're, I mean, really, they, they do fit in, or they're lower than the east and the west, or the, the property to the south and to the east. They are taller than the non-conforming Mango Promenade apartment building you see there and definitely taller than the one-story architect's office to the north, which I want to point out was built before the regulations changed that we don't allow office buildings in multifamily anymore. So that is a non-conforming use, a legal non-conforming use, but if it ever got knocked down, all that could be built back would be a residential building there. So I hope I answered your question.
You did. Yeah. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So thank you, Mr. Snyder. I don't think there are any other questions of the board. So I'll now move into, open the public hearing. I do have one card from Caroline Dwell, so please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Either one. Yep.
Hi. My name is, oh, my name is Caroline Dwell. I'm the owner of 1601 South Flagler, Apartment 1070, which is in the Viking Arms. I'm literally, they keep talking about those south corner. I actually overlook this property directly from my balcony. I'm here to address the impact of the proposed townhomes on my home's light and privacy and livability. Previously, the building that was on the site was centered on the parcel. It was, there was a mature tree that stood in front, front of my balcony, providing shade privacy and a natural buffer from the parcel. This provided me with privacy for both myself and the former resident, while also enhancing the neighborhood's green spray space. One day it was cut down without warning and no tree alteration permit was ever applied for. I did go to code enforcement, but nothing sort of resulted of that. This loss was not just aesthetic, but it also removed the buffer between the properties and, that had existed for years. I've owned this property for over 27 years. I've reviewed the landscaping plans. I've reviewed the landscaping plans and noticing, noticed a puzzling inconsistency with the continuous rhythm of the trees along the south property line, which abruptly stops precisely where the most affected neighbors' properties are. This omission leaves the adjacent units, including mine, exposed to view, to view the wall of the building, as well as the mechanical and pool equipment, and totally removes any kind of privacy that we have. Instead of shrubs, I urged the board to acquire tall canopy-forming trees, like holly trees or geiger trees in these gaps. These would restore the tree canopy lost when the mature tree was illegally removed. It would maintain visual continuity with the rest of the property's landscaping, and create a robust screen for the AC units and pool equipment, transforming the view from these balconies, most affected by this project, from being pool equipment to one of greenery. While I remain concerned about the loss of light from these building placements and height, I recognize the variance will likely be approved. However, I see this as a unique opportunity to maintain a landscaping plan and actually enhance the neighborhood. The current shrub proposal is inadequate, only trees can provide the density and height needed to mitigate the project's impact. I'm asking the board to require the developer to extend the tree line consistently along the property, enhancing a lush, year-round canopy for the most affected residents who actually look at this property every single day from their balconies. Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, you can finish your sentence, don't, but do try to be concise.
No, no, yeah, thoughtful landscaping can turn this variance into a win for the community and the environment and future residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards on this item, I'll ask if there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak. Seeing none, I'll ask staff if there were any emails, voicemails, or anything else that need to be entered into the record, we did receive the one that you had up on the screen. I'm seeing none for that. So with that, I'll close the public hearing. As mentioned at the beginning, I would do give the applicant a chance to rebut, and I think it may be appropriate if you could address the, the comment made about the landscape screen. I, I think it's helpful that that's the, the slide that's up on the board, and again, it's, if you wish to address it or not, you, you may come up.
Hello, my name is Sam Fish, I'm the owner and the developer of the property. First, I wanted to mention, you know, in terms of a tree that was cut down, I don't know when that was exactly, but I likely didn't own the property at the time, so I just want to make that clear. The, the property we purchased was from the Leclerc Development Group that built the high-rise right on the east side of the property. It was land that, I don't know exactly what their purpose was, but it was part of the original high-rise that was built there, I think the fifteen-fifteen building that was demolished a number of years ago, and then the Leclerc was built, and this was additional land on their parcel that, at some point, they decided that they didn't need it for any purpose and decided to sell the property. So, you know, we, we've only owned it for less than a year, and these are our plans that we've developed. In terms of the trees, additional trees and screening, we can certainly look at that, I mean, we, you know, I think our landscape plan, at this point, certainly is, is developed to, you know, to go up with the general game plan to, to build the property. Certainly, things can obviously be changed if we feel that it's appropriate to put a, you know, a canopy or additional trees, or make them more consistent down the south side, we can certainly look to do that. There's no, as far as I know, there's no building condition that, that keeps us from doing that, I think the only condition is, there is a power pole that, that's there that we have to be aware of in terms of putting in trees, I'm not sure, you know, in terms of how far they have to be from the FPL power pole, but, you know, certainly have no problem creating privacy for both our property and the neighboring properties.
Okay. And I'll entertain any questions the board may have, I did have a question, just looking at the landscape plan, it, I was trying to, it does show a call-out on, at least along the east property line of a number of trees of some type, I, I can't see what the species are, it looked like they, it looked like there may be one or two call-outs that showed palm trees, so that doesn't provide as much coverage, but it does seem like they're, they are covering the mechanical equipment and pool equipment. Is it possible to tell if those are, you know, if those are, you know, again, deciduous trees or if they're palm trees?
Any take on that?
Yeah, so, I have the landscape plan here. So they do have, those are palm trees, the five trees along the south property line, in addition to the pool, are palm trees of some sort. The, and then there's the, the shrubs that you see along the south side of the, which would be here, are lower shrub, hedges that, that would be against the mechanical equipment, I don't know if they would cover the full height of the equipment, I just don't know what they're planning to put in there as for the AC units. And these here are just lower shrubs, the hedge material.
Yeah, but they're big circles right along the east property line.
Oh, yeah, so these here, these are sable palms and these are green buttonwoods.
Okay, okay, so there is some screening, and again, I know that the, the discussion here is related to the variance in height of the building, but to the point made earlier about how the oak tree in the front, and the preservation of that tree helps to mitigate the height variance because it's, the landscaping kind of softens the, the height of the building and provides, you know, helps provide a buffer. I think it is relevant to look at the landscaping on all sides for the, because that same justification would apply, that was said, you know, stated earlier about the, the oak tree. But, you know, the, to that end, you know, the, the palms and the, especially the buttonwoods, being there where the pool equipment is would at least, it appears, provide buffering of that equipment and of the height of, of that building on that side.
Yeah, I mean, it was always important that we did everything possible to maintain the, certainly the oak tree in front, we actually designed the property as such. If you can imagine, a typical townhouse, you might see the driveways are both on the front facing on Olive. When we looked at doing that, the tree obviously was right in the middle of where driveway would be. So, we, we had the concept to have one of the driveways access from, from the alley, which, you know, it, it, there was obviously some, some having to work around that, but we felt that the oak tree preserve, being preserved in the front was, was something that was important. I know aesthetics, but also for the neighborhood, it's, I don't know how old it is, but it's certainly old and, and wouldn't want to take that away for any reason. I did also want to mention that I spoke into the neighbor on the north, the Smith &amp; Moore Architecture, I don't know why the, we had gotten an email of support from them, it wasn't included in the packet, for whatever reason, but, but they're well aware, we've had many conversations with them, and they have, you know, no issue with the height of the property, and, you know, were in support of the project.
Okay. And just to clarify one statement you made, it, I, I believe, if I heard correctly, you made the statement that you would be willing to work with staff to look at the landscape plan again, to see if there were opportunities to, to modify anything, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, look, you know, on the east side, we have a twenty-three-story building, and then the condo on the south, to the south of that, which is our border, is, is taller than our building, so clearly, we would want as much separation and privacy from taller buildings around us. So, yeah, I mean, anything that can help create privacy for, for both properties would, would be ideal.
Okay. Do the board members here have any other questions of the applicant, before we move to executive session? Okay, I don't, oh, yes.
Did you speak to your neighbor that's here today?
No, I believe that's a condo building of, I don't know how many units, but I wouldn't think, you know, with condo buildings on the east that are significantly taller than, than our property, I, I guess thinking about a height variance wasn't something I thought about going to the taller buildings to talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, and we'll move now into executive session. So I'll start off with Board Member Savage, any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I, I actually think that, looking at the, the landscaping plan, there looks like there's quite a bit of, you know, shrubs and, you know, palm trees being planted that do give quite a bit of separation between the buildings.
Board Member Pecot?
I agreed with Board Member Savage, I also think it could be, I mean, I, if we can create some height, great, but it could be a utility issue too. I think we need to be cognizant of the underground utilities that are there or above ground when they're trying to develop some of the green space.
Okay. Board Member Hack, any discussion? Okay. Yeah, I, I think, you know, looking at this, the landscape plan and seeing that, that the, there were, the sable palms are, are being planted and pretty close together, and those, you know, can, you know, the thatch on those can really grow together pretty tightly. And then you've got buttonwoods, which do often have a, a pretty full canopy, that there is screening provided there, I mean, the applicant had indicated they're willing to take a second look at it with staff, which never hurts, so if we wanted to, that could be added as a condition just to revisit it with staff and see if, if anything else could be done. But, obviously, that's going to be up to the, the maker of the motion. We did have, there was one condition that was included in the staff report, and so again, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion, which can include the, the staff condition, it could include other conditions if, if desired, but we'll leave the floor open for the motion.
Yeah, I will make the motion, I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant ZBA case number three four four six, a request by Casey Clemmons of Sam Fish Development on behalf of fifteen-ten South Olive Development LLC for a variance from section ninety-four-three oh nine G six C, maximum townhouse height, and section ninety-four-three oh six A, height exemptions of the city zoning and land development regulations, to allow the construction of two townhouse units. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the applications submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Zoning Board of Appeals hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in Article Two, Section Ninety-four thirty-eight D six of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the condition of approval contained in the staff report dated May first, two thousand and twenty-five. I move that this condition is necessary to ensure compliance with the, with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulation and consistent, inconsistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there a further discussion on the motion? If not, I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll. And just again, as a reminder, because only four members are present, then four affirmative votes are required to approve the motion.
Emilyne Savage?
Aye.
Dana Pecot?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Sherry Hack?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved four to zero, so best of luck as you move forward on the, the project. Now, the next two cases, as we heard earlier, are going to be heard together, that's Zoning Board of Appeals case number three four five oh and case number three four five one. So we'll ask our board secretary to please read both items into the record.
Is it okay if I read them as one since the, the beginning, okay, yeah, the beginning is the same, so. It's a request by Robert Miller and Kate Orlando of Highland Contractors on behalf of ten fifteen Ardmore Properties LLC, the owner, for a variance from section ninety-four dash three oh four B two of the city's zoning and land development regulations to permit the encroachment of a new accessory structure into the required front setback on a double frontage lot. The subject properties consisting of approximately zero point fifteen acres located at ten thirteen Ardmore Road and zero point one four six acres located at ten seventeen Ardmore Road are within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. We'll now have the applicant make a presentation.
Good afternoon, my name's Rob Miller, I'm the owner of ten fifteen Ardmore Property.
Can you move the microphone a little bit closer?
Yes, sorry, thank you. And also the president and owner of Highland Contractors, Inc. I've been a resident here since two thousand and thirteen and been investing in the city for over a decade, and my overall goal is to help the community enhance its, its development. A little background on the property, it originally faced Charles Street, a ten sixteen Charles Street. The structure has been demolished and the lot has been split, and they are both ready to be built upon. The photo up top shows the previous structure that did face Charles, and then the bottom two photos are what used, what would be across the street from that, which would be across now from the accessory structure in the back. The, the lots are zoned, single-family, the lot is being interpreted as a dual-frontage lot. I am requesting it is to be used as a single-frontage lot, as there's really not any other houses on that road faced on Charles, and in the area, that might be the only one that has that dual-frontage requirement. The variance request is twenty feet from the front property line and be a single-frontage designated. I believe this is consistent with West Palm Beach's goals for infill and neighborhood revitalization, and it also maintains neighborhood character and charm. At ten thirteen Ardmore, I am going to replicate a house I've done previously, a five-twenty Flamingo Drive, which has that five-foot rear setback at that property, so it's consistent in all the neighborhoods over there. There's a site plan of the property that shows the front setback in the front at twenty-five feet, and then in the rear for that accessory structure at the five feet. This is the proposed house that would be going at ten seventeen, which is a duplicate of what has previously been built at five oh four N Street, and on that property there, there's actually an alleyway in the rear that was allowed to be built five feet off the alleyway. And there's the site plan showing the five feet off the property line for the accessory structure. As mentioned earlier, the dual-frontage in that area is rare, I believe this is the only block that has it in the Pineapple Park neighborhood. The five-foot rear setback matches all the neighbors in the area. There is no harm to light, air drainage, property value, I believe this will be aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood. It will increase property tax basis, and it decreases traffic circulation. There are several dual-fronted streets in the immediate area, not necessarily the same neighborhood, but on Flamingo Drive, you'll find that there are rear yards with secondary streets treated as a standard rear setback, as well as the other streets listed there, Austin Lane, Orange Court, Victoria Drive, and Crescent Court. And those were just some photos of those streets that you could see that the accessory structures, although dual-fronted streets, are five feet off the, the road. The approval request is to allow for the twenty-foot variance request to allow a five-foot rear setback for the accessory structure, and recognize these as single-frontage lots. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We'll now ask the board if there are any questions of the applicant, I'll start off with Board Member Pecot, any questions of the applicant?
No questions right now.
Okay. Board Member Hack, any questions of the applicant?
No questions.
Okay, Board Member Savage?
No questions, I'll probably have some questions of the, from the city.
Okay, and I don't have any questions either, so, thanks. Okay, we'll ask city staff now to come forward and make your presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Louisa Centini, Senior Planner, for the record, the City of West Palm Beach, Land Development. So, as the applicant did a very, made a very adequate presentation, it's going to be very brief on my presentation. Also, there are a couple of things that I would like to highlight that was not included in his presentation. So as previously stated, this is going to be a PowerPoint presentation for both for both items, 3450, 3451, with the address of 1013 Ardmore Road and 1017 Ardmore Road. So this is the aerial map showing the properties. The 1017 Ardmore Road is to the west side. 1013 Ardmore Road is to the east side of the property. As you can see, that strip of the unique situation going on along this, the pineapple area, as you can see, it's very unique for this area. The subject property is 0.146 acres for 1017 Ardmore Road and the property for 1013 Ardmore Road is 0.15 acres. Just to emphasize that properties located within the SF14 residential, high-density residential district allows for a one-dwelling, single, one-dwelling unit in addition to the principal, principal property, principal structure. Again, I'm not going to go over again, but the request is for a 20-foot setback. The applicant proposed five-foot setback. So these are the surveys of the property I just highlighted so you can see where the property is located. Again, the same thing. So I just brought this up so you can see closer, close look to what's the situation going on. So as you can see, the accessory structures are very, they look very much like each other, although I really like the presentation of the applicant showing the unique character. Each one of the residents, they're very distinct, although they have the same square footage, the same type of setback requirements and accessory structures, they look very distinct from each other. So that's a very, it was a very interesting indication that the applicant is very concerned about maintaining the unique character of the neighborhood within the pineapple community. Again, the proposed accessory structures for both is five-foot setback to the rear, to the front in this case. Same thing to the sides, five-foot setback. Therefore, staff approves, subject to the condition, based on the findings that the petition meets all the required variance standards according to section 94-38-D6 of the City of West Palm Beach, ZLDR. Recommend the approval, subject to the condition that the 20-foot front setback variance along Charles Street shall apply to any accessory structure, subject to permit review and approval by the City of West Palm Beach. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to Board Member Hack with any questions of staff.
Is the accessory structure a garage?
The accessory structure is not a garage. It's a dwelling.
Oh.
Yeah, please speak into the microphone.
It's like a cabana hangout and a bathroom.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, there's, there's no entrance off of Charles Street.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant, or of staff?
No.
Okay. Well, now we go to Board Member Savage.
Do any properties on Charles Street currently have a variance or have, you know, are closer than that 25-foot setback from the back of the property?
According to the research, there is no, there's no other property along the Charles Street area as the Charles Street. Let me go back here. I can show you. As you can, as you can notice there, there's a strip that happens only between the Ardmore Road and Charles Street.
Yes.
Properties adjacent to the north, they have other properties that are bused to the north portion, so therefore, there's no, there's no situation that is just like what the applicant's presenting right now. As long as the strip, there are a few properties that has the same type of limitation, I mean, all the properties have the same type of limitation. But this is the first that I identify, according to the research, that is requesting the variance for an accessory structure along the Charles Street.
Okay, keeping up this slide, so it's asking for, instead of 25-foot from Ardmore Road, correct? It's asking for five feet.
No, no.
Is that, is that correct?
From, no, no, from Charles Street.
Oh, from Charles Street.
From Charles Street.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah. So the, because it's a dual frontage, and this is a unique situation, and this is something staff is to address and to clean up our zoning and development regulations, because it shouldn't be happening. I mean, you have a specified established front, front setback, you automatically also going to have established a rear setback. But in this case, because of the unique situation, you have the dual frontage. Yes. Yes, so, thank you, Angela. Yeah, so there's also the swimming pool. So the swimming pool also in that property. Let me show you here. As you can see, as you notice there, the swimming pool between the primary accessory and the accessory structure, the primary building and accessory structure, is also another limitation also, as you can see, because it's located in the rear yard, but it also limits the development within that property. So this is, this is one of the reasons the applicant is requesting that, the variance setback, so they can develop the site the best way as possible, maintaining the primary structure, a pool with a patio deck, and an area for sod, which is on the top right-hand corner, that's all sod area, and the proposed accessory structure to the, to the top left-hand corner.
Could you show, I think that there was a picture of what Charles Street looked like? I don't know if it was on your slide or if it was on the applicant's side. If you could pull that back. I just wanted to take another look at that, if possible.
Absolutely. I think it was right in the beginning, right here.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is, this is a view from Charles Street.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
No further questions.
Okay. Board Member Pecot?
It does look like they're taking out a significant amount of green space and replacing with fences. Are they planning on putting any other sort of green space in or buffer for neighbors?
There, there is, yes. So let me go back into my, have you, did you include your site plan there? The no landscape plan? Okay, we don't have access to the portal here at this time, but if you want to explain the landscape?
Yes.
Go ahead.
We put one in the portal, but it's not on my presentation. But yes, there are already approved plans from the City of West Palm Beach for landscaping trees, silver button woods. One of them has two silver, excuse me, two oak trees going in the front, and then the other one has palm trees going in the front. So yes, there is a full landscape plan that's already been approved by the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just rate it really quick. There's three button woods to the top left-hand corner and another three also on the top right-hand corner to mask the, the structure along the Charles Street, just so you know. And that serves for both properties.
Any other questions?
No other questions.
Okay. I had a question, which actually may be best, well, one question of staff, which is, I, for some reason, I thought that Pineapple Park was a designated historic district, but I guess it is not?
No, not in, not in that area.
Got it. Okay. And then, and this may be best answered by the applicant, but what is, because it wasn't clear from the site plan, what is the treatment then along Charles Street going to be? What is it going to look like from, for example, from a pedestrian experience? If you're, if you're walking along the street and looking at this?
Yes, you're going to see similar to what the neighbors have on that side, a fence and then trees directly behind the fence.
Okay.
Yep.
Like hedges too, or is there?
The hedges probably won't, it would probably take some time to get, get up that high, but there are silver button wood hedges going on the property, as well as the silver button wood trees that Louise mentioned.
Okay. Okay. Okay, yeah, no other questions of applicant or the staff. So at this point, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't have any cards on this item. Is there anybody here in the audience who wishes to speak related to this case? Or, sorry, either of these two cases? Okay, I'll ask staff if there were any emails, voicemails, or anything to enter into the record. I'm seeing a no. Okay, so I will close the public hearing. We'll give the applicant a chance to rebut or close with anything if you need to. If not, we'll move directly into executive session.
The only other point I might say is there are some other houses down, down the road that has like a garage accessory structure closer than the 25 feet. I could eyeball it and know that they are closer, so.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Thank you. So we'll move into executive session. I'll start off with Board Member Hack with comments, discussion regarding either of the two cases.
No comments or discussion.
Okay. Board Member Savage?
No comments.
Okay. Board Member Pecot?
No comments.
Okay. Yeah, my only comment is simply that it, I definitely agree, reading through the materials and looking at the situation, it is, you know, having the double frontage lot is a unique, is a unique condition. Don't see that, that much of it. The only cases or examples I can think of it are cases where you have a, we, we have a number of places in the city that have a, you know, an actual street on one frontage and then an alleyway in the other front, along the backside of the frontage, as opposed to, you know, a fence with another property immediately abutting it. And in that, in those instances, this is the type of treatment that you often see, which is that, you know, the accessory structure or whatever, you know, may be located in the rear of the property, kind of up against the alley. So recognize that neither Charles Street nor Ardmore is truly an alley. They're both streets, but in this, again, it's, it's being treated in the same way that we normally have seen in other, other, you know, cases with, with a street and an alley. It's just here, it's two streets. With that, we'll entertain a motion. And just a reminder that these are two separate cases, so we need to, to have separate motions and a separate vote on each. So the first would actually be case number, let me get back to that. Yes, 3450. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion. I move that the zoning board of appeals grant ZBA case number 3450, a request by Robert Miller and Kate Orlando of Highland Contractors on behalf of 1015 Ardmore Properties LLC, the owner, for a variance for, from section 94-304-B2 of the city zoning and land development regulation to permit the encroachment of a new accessory structure into the required front setback on a double frontage lot located within a single-family, high-density residential zoning district. The motion is based upon the testimony presented with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in Article 2, Section 94-38-D6 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of the variance is made conditional upon the following stipulations and safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and the intent of the zoning and land development regulations inconsistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. The 20-foot front setback variance along Charles Street shall apply to any accessory structure, subject to permit review and approval of the City of West Palm Beach.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any final discussion on the motion?
I actually have one question. Because of, you know, if this does pass, because, you know, because this would then allow any accessory structure, would it be necessary to then even vote on 3451? Because at that point, this structure would then be allowed just by approval by staff, correct?
And staff can confirm, I think that we're, that we're voting on it specific to this property. So there are separate votes being made, because each variance is considered, even though in this case, you know, a variance doesn't set a precedent for another variance. So in this case, because, just because we're approving a variance on, you know, 1013 Ardmore Road, it does not confer that same variance to 1017 Ardmore Road. We would have to, have to review that one separately. In this instance, the conditions are, they're neighboring properties, the conditions are the, you know, they're kind of dealing with the exact same conditions and the same justifications for the variance, and therefore, that's why we heard them together. But they do have to be voted separately, because in theory, we could approve one and deny another.
Yeah, I just understand, but the language, you know, the language of it, you know, states, you know, like, I, I was under the impression that it went from, you know, the 20-foot setback variance along Charles Street shall apply to any accessory structure subject to permit review. So wouldn't that mean if, like, let's say they're, you know, another property, like a neighbor, could then just come, come with this approval, correct?
No, this is, these conditions only specifically for 1013 Ardmore Road and 1017 Ardmore Road. Any other, any other property that comes for this type of variance shall, shall come through this board again for, for approval.
And I could suggest that should, if we wanted to eliminate any concern about, I agree with you, the language could be vague.
Yes, I agree.
It shall apply to any accessory structure on this property. You could add that to the motion.
So then I, I move to modify my, I move to modify my motion, or I modify my motion at this point to just eliminate that condition, and we'll just vote on them separately. Yeah, like, I move to modify and eliminate the staff condition.
Good. Let me hear from staff.
Angela Van Penning, his own administrator. The reason the condition is in there, if the applicant wanted to come back and build something else in that property, if I don't have the condition in there, still going to require him to come back and go through the same process again. So we put the condition in there so that any, anything that's built on Long Charles Street is fine. So variance is only applied to the property that is applied, the, unapplied to the property that we're discussing. It's not a general variance. Maybe we can make it look clearer.
Okay, that was, that was, that was the misunderstanding. That this, this would just apply to this property.
No, it's not a general variance, specifically to the property that's before you today.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but that's why we want it in there, because we want to make sure he wants to put something, a shed in, you don't have to come back to us to get another variance of Class B for a shed.
Yeah. Okay, I understand now. Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry about the, if it wasn't clear enough.
No.
Yeah, that was specifically for 1013 and 1017 Ardmore Road only.
Got it. I under, I now understand. Thank you. So. I wish to, I guess, modify my motion again and re-add the, the staff condition, you know, the condition of the staff condition of the 20-foot front setback variance along Charles Street shall apply to any accessory structure, subject to permit review and approval by the City of West Palm Beach.
Perfect. Okay. That's, that's clear. So there is a motion made by Board Member Savage and seconded by Board Member Pecot. Any further discussion at this point? So we'll ask the board secretary to please call the roll.
Emilyne Savage?
Yes.
Dana Pecot?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Sherry Hack?
Yes.
The motion is approved four to zero. We'll now entertain a motion on ZBA case number 3451. Is there a motion?
I move that the zoning board of appeals grant ZBA case number 3451, a request by Robert Miller and Kate Orlando of Highland Contractors on behalf of 1015 Ardmore Properties LLC, the owner, for a variance from section 94-304-B2 of the city's zoning and land development regulations to permit the encroachment of a new accessory structure into the required front setback on a double frontage lot located within a single-family, high-density residential zoning district. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in Article 2, Section 94-38-D6 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of the variance is made conditional upon the following restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. The 20-foot front setback variance along Charles Street shall apply to any accessory structure, subject to permit review and approval by the City of West Palm Beach.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. The motion was made by Board Member Pecot and seconded by Board Member Savage. Is there any final discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll.
Emilyne Savage?
Yes.
Dana Pecot?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Sherry Hack?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is approved four to zero. That concludes the cases that were in front of us today. So we will now move next into any unfinished business, any unfinished business, which there's none, but now we'll move into new business. I'll recognize our, okay, well, as far as new business goes, the, as, at our last meeting, or prior, just prior to our last meeting, the prior vice chair person, who is Christopher Cameron, had resigned from that position, so we now need to elect from this board a new vice chair. So we'll start off with any nominations for vice chair of the board.
I would like to nominate Jonathan Burgess.
Okay. Are there, that, I think, and I'm a little rusty on this part, do we need, we don't need a second nomination, we just need to see if there are any additional nominations, correct?
Additional nomination, but Mr. Burgess specifically said he did not want to be here, so, just letting you know.
Oh, he, he said he does not want to be vice chair?
He told us specifically, he wasn't going to be here, but he wanted to make sure.
That he was not nominated or elected?
He was not nominated.
Okay. Okay. So I will entertain other nominees for the position?
I'm...
I can pass the gavel and hit somebody, but...
I mean...
Right. Normally, I'd give it to a vice chair.
Yeah, I mean, I would be open to being the vice chair. Yeah.
Okay. So is there a nomination? You can also self-nominate, but is there anybody who'd like to nominate?
I'll nominate Emily Savage.
Okay.
I'll accept the nomination.
Okay. So if, I'll ask one more time for any further nominations up here? Seeing none, and knowing that it was, understanding that it was Board Member Burgess's desire to decline and not accept the nomination, then we have one nominee on the floor. So I'll ask all in favor of, of Board Member Savage as being elected to vice chair, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and Savage is now our vice chair of the zoning board of appeals. As far as I know, there's no other new business or other business, so I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded at 2:44 PM, that the zoning board of appeals meeting be adjourned. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned.